Beginning with Monday. I don't know. Beginning with baseball, picture of the Dodgers or something.
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know why. That's not entirely true. This is in his. No? And.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you all would grab a chair there, we'll be about ready to open. And I'm, I believe we're gonna get heard tonight. Can everybody hear us out there? Thank you for being here tonight, and we really appreciate that. I, tonight is gonna be a little bit different on how we handle the operations there. So the first thing we have on the agenda is the Lancaster Financial Authority. So we're gonna clear that agenda open. And then the Lancaster Housing Authority, regular meeting, and we're gonna declare that one open. And we're going to declare the regular Lancaster Redevelopment Agency and regular Lancaster Council open. And then we will, at that point, go back to the financial one, and we'll vote on that one way or the other, and close that one. But we will leave the housing open. And then we will go down through Public Business from the floor on page number two of the regular agenda. And take the action to approve the agency and the consent calendar for the council. Then we're gonna have some reports. I think, okay.
Is that what that was all about?
Jim, you want to lead us in the pledge of allegiance? And I don't see Chaplin from the prison, he told me to be here tonight? Yes. I think we ought to do that. Roll call, please. That is correct. Here. Here.
Chair.
Here. Yes. Thank you very much. Would you please stand at this point? I'm gonna go ahead and ask the Lord's blessing on us as we walk through this agenda, and then after that, Councilmember Jaffra will lead us in the pledge. Wonderful, loving Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to be here, in this house, here in the city of Lancaster. And with the file of us sitting here tonight, need your guidance and help. And those who are at their seats who are here with us, as they ask questions and request information, we pray that all of this will work in such a way that everybody will leave with the information that they need to do what they need to do. Thank you now, Lord, and we ask your blessings upon us, in the precious name of our Lord and Savior Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
May be seated. Wonderful opportunity today to be with some young people talking about black history, and I took them through the pledge of allegiance and dealt with that little, it says, liberty and justice for all. That is our country. I also shared with them that during the Korean War, I went to Korea, Okinawa, Japan, everywhere else. And when I got back home, with all of the inequities that we had in those days, America is the best that I know. And I'm very pleased to be an American. Thank you for allowing me to give you that little deal. So I guess we go back now to the finance.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we'll take the finance, and gentlemen, it's on our hands to, do we have any agenda items to be removed?
No, sir.
Public business from the floor on agenda items for the finance?
No.
And the consent calendar, gentlemen, is that our hands to do something with?
Move adoption.
Second.
Right, would you cast your ballot? That is unanimous and so ordered. And I think at this point, can we go ahead and adjourn the financial committee?
Unless there's somebody that wants to talk on non-agenda, agendaized items for the financing authority.
Not on this side. On the finance?
Yes, sir.
He said no, that's not what he intended at. Okay. Okay. So can I go ahead and adjourn this one then, too?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we will adjourn unless there's opposition from the council. We'll adjourn this council, this financial committee until. And now we will go to the City Council and Lancaster Redevelopment Agency regular meeting. And we're right ahead of the roll call, we're right ahead of the invocation, we're right ahead of the pledge. And I guess at this time, you wanna go ahead and take the.
Excuse me, what about the Housing Authority?
That's gonna come in conjunction with, see that, look at the note on the mail here.
But we do have a consent calendar item for the Housing Authority?
Right.
HACC one.
Okay.
Approval of the minutes.
All right.
Move adoption.
Second.
All right, let's do that. Thank you, Andy. It is so early. Now then.
You have, on your City Council Redevelopment Agency agenda, you have two informational items that need to be taken care of?
You wanna take care of those before we take care of the.
I think at this point, you can follow the City Council, agency.
All right, let's do that. Law enforcement on page. And that looks like to me is Captain Carl Dealey. Not that we like him anymore. Ladies and gentlemen, Captain Carl Dealey.
Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for this opportunity to kinda give you a brief of where we are after 2007. I wanna start off with a little history, just to give you an idea of where we're at and manpower at the station. In 2003, our contract was a little over $10,800,000. In 2004, they went up to $11,785,000. In 2007, our budget was $18,045,000. So thank you very much for all the extra resources which you're about to hear about. The difference between 2003 and 2007 is a difference between 67 sworn officers and 100 sworn officers working in the city. And that doesn't even cover all the specialized overtime projects that I'm gonna tell you here in a little bit, and the extra resources sent up by the sheriff. That is the number one city contract with the LA County Sheriff's Department. Over the past, just a little over a year now, we've trained 60 deputies. Now, it's not, it's unusual for a station to train more than 15 or 20 in a year, and we trained over 60, which helped us fill all those vacancies that have been plaguing us for the last few years. Now, out of these, all the things that you've given us here over the last few years, we have the TOP program, a sergeant and eight deputies. They accounted for 2,210 arrests last year. That's just those eight deputies and a sergeant. We have the mall deputy on the east side at 20th Street East and Avenue J, where we have the Walmart and the Front Gate Plaza. We have the domestic violence grant, which the city worked with, with the state, to enable us to have a domestic violence investigator. We have the graffiti tracker program. We have cameras in the parks now, which the deputies can access via their laptop computers or through the station to see what's going on in the parks and help make it safer. We have the CSO program, which accounted for 7,700 calls that normally would have been handled by deputies in the past, and has saved the, probably the equivalent of six or seven deputies that the city would have had to pay for to amount, to be able to handle that many calls. Not only do the CSOs handle the non-workable reports that normally we'd have to send deputies to, but they've also been trained to take fingerprints. In the past, it could take up to two or three days for a print analyst to come to your house. Let's say your house was burglarized, you might have to wait two or three days to get a print deputy. Now we're able to do same-day service because the print deputies, and not only they cut down on the time, they do an excellent job of it. They live out here, they care about what's going on in their community, and it's really made a difference. Some of the things with the CSO program that we didn't foresee was their ability, since they are centered on a small number of the total kind of calls that deputies respond to, they're able to spend much more time with them. So we find the CSOs, if they go to a burglary, they're going to six, seven, eight, nine, 10 of the different neighbors to track down to see if they can get additional information. And many times, reports that are non-workable, which means we don't have much evidence to point to anybody, turns into workable information as a result of an arrest. So it's probably the best thing, one single thing, that we've done out here to change the way we respond to crime. And they've just done an outstanding job. The LandCap program is one of our programs that's been out here now since 2004. They continue to do a great job. They made over 1,500 arrests in dealing with crime in rental housing property. One of the things the city added to the LandCap team in 2007 was a law enforcement technician to operate the office, somewhat as an office manager, to keep the LandCap deputies out in the field, because she is able to answer the phone calls and take care of the reports and the filing and everything else that the LandCap deputies had to do before. We have the internet crime reporting, where people can report crime over the internet. We have the red light cameras now out there, helping to make our streets safer. We have the park safety deputies, they're out there on overtime at targeted parks. They meet weekly with the park staff to target which parks need to have extra patrol to make sure that they're safe for our community and for our visitors that come into the community. We have the party cars that go out on Friday and Saturday nights from 10 o'clock to 3 o'clock in the morning. That's two two-man cars, whose sole responsibility is to go out and make sure that these parties don't disturb the neighborhoods and to stop them from becoming out-of-control parties that lead to assaults, stabbings, and even shootings. We have the reward program for people who report burglaries and robberies. We've had a huge jump in the number of calls to our hotline, from 102,006 to 500 in 2007. And much of that came as a result of the reward program. Interestingly enough, is the overwhelming majority of people who report crimes that could be eligible for rewards usually turn it down. It's, for, I would say about 70% of the people eligible have turned down the opportunity to get the reward. They just want to make sure that they make their community safer. We have the Crime Trends Meeting, which brings in people from, every Wednesday, we meet with not only all our own people and the key programs in the station, but from throughout the Sheriff's Department that deal with crime in the Antelope Valley, meet together to work out the crime problems and how we work together. And oftentimes, we'll get people from Palmdale that will come up, and we'll work jointly on problems that are going on in the Antelope Valley. We have the CORE program, Community Oriented Response Enforcement. These are basically town sheriffs. We've divided up the areas that have the most crime in the city, and that's in the area between 20th Street West and 20th Street East, Avenue H and Avenue K. They each have a quarter of that area that they're responsible for, and they will either work as a group of four, or sometimes they'll work as two-man teams or even single-man teams. They are responsible for dealing with everything from serious crime to quality of life issues, and then bringing in the resources that are available throughout our station and the department to deal with those particular crimes. And they are the people that are available to the citizens to call when they have specific problems or wanna work one-on-one with a deputy. Now, that program has just been ongoing now for a few months, and it's already had a dramatic effect. They've already made hundreds of arrests and have directed other resources into helping make additional arrests, and also helping for everything from noise nuisance to people that are parking their cars in the street, to vandalism, the problems with transients in the area. And they're working with the business community, the residents, and the neighborhood watches. For the last several months, we've had a gang eradication program, where not only are we continuing to work with the gangs on a regular basis, but we are targeting a gang until we arrest them into submission, convince them to move out of the area, and we've had great success in sending their leaders to state prison. It's been ongoing for a while. We're, we see no end in sight because it is being successful, but at the same time, we're not ignoring the other gangs that are going on in the area. We've been able to do this with extra resources that the sheriff has brought up into our area. We also have our targeted areas. We are going through specified areas throughout the city. We're about to start our third area. We're gonna do the surveys this Saturday. And what happens in those areas is we go to a target area, our first area was between Avenue H and Avenue I, 10th Street West and 13th Street West. We stayed there between 60 and 90 days, depending on what's going on. We have a six-person team with a sergeant that is a team that was set up from the department's cops program. They stay in that area that entire time, and then they bring additional resources, whether it's the top team, the core team, narcotics, gangs, all over, to deal with the problems. Then they move on to the next area while we're leaving, by, or leaving a maintenance program to make sure that those problems don't start up again. At the end of each program, we have a town hall meeting to see what it was we did right, what it is we could improve on when we go in the next area, or to work further in that particular area. So we are going into our third area starting Saturday. Now, the result of all this is that with all the extra people and all the time that the CSO deputy, excuse me, CSO officers have saved us, we set a department record for arrests, of 14,773 arrests in 2007. That's up from 10,574 arrests, which was good for second best on the department in 2006. The crime rate has dropped 2%. Now, that may not seem like a lot, but when you consider the crime rate has risen gradually every year since 1999, I believe we've got the ship turned around in the right direction, and we're going in the right direction. And now, with all the deputies that we've trained, that are ready to go and off-training, I believe that 2008 is gonna be a banner year for our station and for our city. One of the things that shows up with all the extra resources, that as you recall, in 2002, 2003, our routine response times were almost three hours to an average routine response call. In 2006, that average response time was 83 minutes. In 2007, that response time has now dropped to 72 minutes. Our priority responses have dropped 13 minutes from 15 minutes, and we continue at about five minutes for emergency response calls. While it may be an aberration, in January of 2008, our routine response time was 49 minutes for the city. So we're definitely going in the right direction in that area. Our false alarms are down 16% from 2006, saving our deputies about 500 hours of time that they can use for proactive police work. And our false alarms are down 42% since that program started in 2005. Our traffic collisions are down. And here I have to stop and make sure I give thanks to the Public Works Department. This has just been a great partnership. Randy's folks have just done an outstanding job, and they are equally responsible, if not more so, for the drop in the traffic collisions in our city. Things that most people probably don't even realize is changing the traffic lights to LED lights that are much brighter, using the smart crosswalks and the radar speed signs, the shoulder repairs, the line striping, the edge striping, to make sure people don't drive off the side of the road, the enlarging of the left turn bays and changing two-way stops to four-way stops, gradually changing the permissive green arrow where it goes to a solid green, and people have trouble remembering that they don't have the right of way on that solid green. Those combinations with our ability to slow people down in this area and force them to yield the right of way has resulted in our, not only have our traffic collisions gone down total by 5.3%, the most important statistics are that our injury and our fatal collisions have gone down. Now, we went down from 996 injury collisions in 2006, down to 820 in 2007, and we dropped from 20 fatal collisions to 16 in 2007. Our citations are up to 27,284 compared to 17,089 in 2006, and that doesn't count the red light camera citations. So our people have been freed up to do outstanding proactive police work, and it's just a direct result of having more resources and having more time to do the job. Now, it's only been a short period of time, but for the start of 2008, but for the first month of 2008, and the first 24 days of February, our violent crimes are down 26% compared to the same time last year. And our property crimes are down 24% compared to that same time last year. Now, again, we have a long time to go and the rest of the year, and, but this is a heck of a lot better start than we had in 2007. And I believe that we are going to have, as I said, a banner year in crime reduction. Now, I'm happy that we were able to turn the crime rate down, but we've got a long ways to go to get to our goal, which is 300 crimes per every 10,000 in the city, which would be about a 30% drop in crime. But I believe, as I said in the beginning, is that we are turned around in the right direction, and just what we've seen in the first two months of the year, I see that those programs are going on. And the sheriff has not set any date about stopping all the extra resources that have come up here, and he's said that he's in this until we get to that 300 stage and probably beyond. And we have to give a lot of thanks to the partnership we've had with the city of Palmdale and the supervisor's office, because we're taking a valley approach. We help them with things down in Palmdale, they help us with things up here, and both stations are helping, both cities are helping in the unincorporated county area, because whatever crime is going on anywhere in the Antelope Valley affects both cities and the unincorporated county area. I'll try to give you a brief, quick, what we're looking at in 2008, besides all those programs that we already talked about. We are finding that our problem-solving police work that we do, excuse me, with LandCap and CORE and the TOP team has been very effective. What we're planning to do for 2008 is enable our patrol force, which is the largest group we have out there at any one time, to be able to do the same thing. We're involved now with, our new senior criminal justice analyst has hooked us up with a great program that they've worked in San Diego to do this problem-solving policing. We're gonna train our people in a train, the trainer program, and then we're going to get our patrol folks trained in how to do this, where they look for, not just to respond to crimes and do short-term fixes, but they're looking for long-term fixes and how to do that from a patrol car on a regular schedule, and not just leave this all to our specialized teams. I tried to make that as brief as possible, which you know is a little difficult for me, but I'm, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
How about, I didn't hear any comment unless I missed it, on the license plate readers?
Oh, the license plate recognition, they've been very effective. We've been using them with our traffic cars, our traffic deputies, and now we found that that turns out to be a bit of a problem, because when they respond to a traffic collision or whatever, they takes them out of the area. So what we're gonna do is we're going to use them more with our CORE team, our TOP team, our LandCap team, and do specific operations with them, specifically in our gang eradication program, and the, when we're going into the targeted sites in the area, so that we can not only find the people with warrants, or stolen cars, or other serious wants on their license plates, but also to build up a database for the type of information that we need on some of our people that are involved in most of the criminal activity out here. It's been a great tool.
Very good. Good gentleman. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a question, and first let me say thank you for your hard work, to you and your leadership, all your deputy sheriffs, because you really do do a marvelous job for our city.
Thank you.
I can't say enough about it. Really do appreciate that. And I think it's really great also that we established goals, and you participated from the council perspective, and it's very obvious from the presentation tonight that we marched forward, that you took the ball and you marched forward with those goals that were established, and we certainly are heading in the right direction. The only question I have is, and maybe I'm incorrect, we were down 2% overall. Really do appreciate that, and I think it's really great also that we established goals and you participated from the council perspective, and it's very obvious from the presentation tonight that we marched forward, that you took the ball and you marched forward with those goals that were established, and we certainly are heading in the right direction. The only question I have is, and maybe I'm incorrect, we were down two percent overall.
In the crime rate?
In the crime rate.
Right.
Six months ago, maybe I'm mistaken, I thought we were down four percent.
We were down three percent, a little over three percent, getting pretty close to four percent. Towards the end of the, unfortunately, the summertime is one of our busiest times. We kind of lost some ground during there, and actually, we had some losses also in the September, October area, but overall ended up a little bit right at two percent for the year.
Yeah, and I would imagine you probably had some at the very end of the year, at the holidays too, wouldn't there have been an increase?
Yeah, December can be kind of a busy month for, especially for petty theft and larceny. In fact, we always target the violent crimes as one of our number one powers, but for two thousand and eight, there's going to be a program to deal with burglaries especially and larcenies. Believe it or not, the larcenies is something that we get more effect on the crime by engaging the public and the businesses just to make themselves less of a hard target. For example, one of the most common crimes is people leaving their briefcases, cameras, iPods, phones in their cars, and either leaving them unlocked or leaving them in plain view so someone breaks the window. Just by putting those objects in the trunk or underneath a seat will make you less likely to be a victim. Burglary, again, is probably the crime that most affects a community's feelings of being safe or not safe. While we believe that, even though the numbers show that we're a little over last year's total, I believe that's probably not a real accurate view in that we have the ability to respond much quicker to burglaries this year with our CSO program deputies. And I believe a lot of people who just got frustrated waiting to send that report if all that meant was an insurance thing, that they just didn't report it. So I think that we've started in the right direction, especially with the work that the top team did. And again, the top team also had a dramatic effect. If you, you can see in your things, the number of, the dramatic drop in car thefts this year, which was burglary and auto theft were the two things they targeted for this year.
Right. Okay, yeah, it's just remarkable, the way you started, and you had nineteen ninety-nine. Ever since then, it's gone up, and finally, we've hit a time when we're starting to see a trend down. So I want to thank you for your hard work and the entire department's hard work, and I'm very pleased.
One group I've got to give credit to, who probably deserves the most credit, is that the public has gotten involved.
Absolutely.
As in no time that I've ever seen before, they are fully engaged. You know, the work that Shelley Henson's done with the Neighborhood Watch has been amazing, but just the fact that people are out there constantly helping us, and our, and the ranks of our volunteers at the station are just, we're running out of things for people to do over there. So many people are coming over there to help us out.
Yeah, we have well over a hundred of them now, am I correct?
Yes, the Neighborhood Watches?
Yes.
Yeah, and the Chamber of Commerce has jumped in, they've started a program where they notify all the businesses of crime trends that are going on. We're meeting with them at their meetings to be able to do that. Some of the local businesses have stepped forward and are, we're just getting that Business Watch program going, so two thousand and eight, we should see even more community involvement than we saw last year.
Right, so thank you to the public too for getting engaged. That's how we do it together as a team.
All together as a team. Any other questions, gentlemen? No? Comment, go ahead. Present. Are we really going to let him say anything about that?
Can we? Do that now?
We really, I don't think we ought to let him say one word. Is that you? Or me? I gotta say something? All right. Listen, let me tell you something, all of you, and we'll let the captain speak in a few moments, but I, on a very serious note, the other day we had a meeting with the editors, and I said very clearly in my mind that out of the eighteen years that I've been on the council, I've seen several captains that has come to us, and as far as I'm concerned, we're all good. I don't know of a bad one that we had. But I, I would summarize that like this, that they're all good, but here go Captain Carl Dealy at the top of the whole heap. He's anything that you could ask for in a captain and a person. So Carl will really want you to know that we appreciate you, and doggone it, we're going to miss you, there's no question about that. So I, if any of you, the rest of you want to say something, you can do that, but Carl, there's no way that anybody can step into your shoes immediately and fill those. It's going to take a minute for practice, and they're going to have to go barefooted a bit and grow their feet so they can get into your shoes. I don't know if there's anything you want to say before these guys speak or not. Come on, gentlemen, you.
Let me dovetail on something you said, Mr. Mayor, and that's that our previous station captains have been good. Carl, you've been great.
Yes, he has.
And I mean that. And I know you're going to turn around and say you've got great people underneath you, but that points out something else, that they've had a great leader, and we appreciate that, and I know our citizens appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I want to say thank you, great job, and to say what Councilman Silvio said about, that you would say that you have great men under you, and we're wearing a lot of hats up here in different agencies, but let me just put on a different hat that I wear once in a while, and that's a representative of the Association for Deputy Sheriffs, and which our membership has, for several years, voted you the number one captain in the county, and so deservedly. And I think the members and the line deputies are going to miss you probably more than we are, so, and we appreciate everything you do for the city.
Really do.
You've done a great job.
Just a quick thought. You took, you took a group of deputies that many of them were down, the morale was down at that station. You went through some tough times yourself, with the loss of two deputies, and I can tell you this much, I don't know that anybody could have pulled these guys together as well as you did, and that came from the top. Morale comes from the top.
It does.
If your skipper's on board and he's, and he's good, these guys are going to react. They'll give extra time, they won't put in overtime, they'll go out there and do the job because you led them, and you're a leader, and thank God for you, I'll tell you that right now.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it, we really do.
Go ahead, Andrew.
I don't know that I can say a whole lot more other than what everybody else here has said. There's five of us up here, and to have all five of us sit here and sing your praises, especially, especially in lieu of the last year or so, I think in itself says a lot, that there's a lot of respect up here from all five of us in the city council, because your leadership has just been the best I've ever seen, and it is just absolutely awesome, and really do appreciate what you've done for the city of Lancaster and what your staff has done, and your deputy sheriffs, just everybody, thank you so much.
Thank you. I can't forget when you lost one of the motorcycle car, and I took the time to go over there as, not just as a mayor, but as a preacher, to mill around with them, to hang out with them, and who else was hanging around there with them? And they had a place to lay their shoulders physically or whatever, Carl Dealy was right there, and I can't forget that, and we appreciate it. Now, all of you out there, I don't know if you all know what we're talking about or not, so, did you want to say anything to my city manager, and then Carl, you can tell us about what happened?
Well, I'll let Carl tell you what, well, I'll tell, Carl's been promoted to commander of Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. I said before, I'll say again, if there are more people like Carl at that rank, the county would be a safer place. Carl's been a blessing to the community.
Yes, he has.
He's had an incredibly difficult job. I couldn't have picked a better person to work with on public safety, trade hundreds of emails a week and just work together, and this, we would not be going in the right direction that we're going without Carl Dealy. And I could go an hour, and I know everyone could, but I'll ask Carl if he wants to say anything.
That's a curious thing to give me the microphone, but.
Go ahead.
Well, thank you very much for your really kind remarks, and I do have to say though, I just work with an incredible group of men and women, the sworn officers, the reserves, the civilian personnel, the volunteers and the explorers. I mean, it's just an incredible group, and to be quite honest, they've carried me for five years. I look good because they do a great job. You know, they've gone from, you know, not having a whole lot of resources to having a ton of resources, and they've just been so grateful that they've just constantly, whenever I've asked them to step away, you know, sometimes I think maybe I was asking too much, but there was never, I never asked more than they would give, and every time I asked, they gave more than I, than I asked for, and I, I can't be more appreciative. I work with the greatest group of city staff members that I've ever worked with. I've been all over LA County. I've been doing this for thirty years, and I've worked at a variety of stations, I've worked different administrative jobs, and this is the most professional group of city staff I've ever worked with. You guys have done an absolutely great job of bringing the best in here. Your directors especially are just a wonderful group to work with every day, and, you know, we've got this great community who's drawn a line in the sand and said, we've had enough, and they've jumped in behind us, and, you know, it's making a difference. And I tell you, this is, this is really bittersweet for me. I've had a really difficult time with this. I should be excited about the promotion, but I can't tell you how hard it is to be leaving, because I've just enjoyed working with you. I've enjoyed working with them, and I have enjoyed working with the community. This has been by far the best experience of my thirty years on the Sheriff's Department, and I will be grateful, and I know when I'm gone, I'm going to regret, because I wanted to be here when all the, you know, it's been a lot of hard work the last five years, and we're starting to see the fruits of it. The good news is, I guess for me, is that I'm staying in the region, so my responsibility will be Lancaster and Palmdale stations among some of the other stations. So you haven't completely gotten rid of me yet, so. So I just want to, I want to thank you for the opportunity. Like I said, it's by far, I absolutely love working with the city of Lancaster, I love working with our unincorporated county areas, and the community's been great, and the hard thing will be the day I have to walk away from that station, because I've never worked with a better group of men and women in my thirty years on the department, and I can't foresee that I will ever have the opportunity to work with people of their quality again. So thank you for all the nice things, I'm turning bright pink up here by now, so thank you again, and.
Again, Carl, thank you so very much. I guess we have to go on, because we've got still to finish the agenda, so we're going to talk about recycling water update, and that's Mr. Randy Williams.
Well, Mayor Hearns and council members, you know that if anybody can speak as passionately as Carl does about his line of work, that being crime prevention, it's me talking about water issues. Before I say anything about recycled water this evening though, I just have to tell you, and I know this is off the agenda at this point in time, but what a pleasure it has been for me personally to work with Carl and his staff.
Very good.
I have sat trying to be humble and to not blush every time he has raised the partnership issue between the Public Works Department and his staff, but truly it has been a partnership. We couldn't have helped him had they not helped us, and I just want to let all of you know that the one description that I found missing in all the wonderful things said about Commander Dealy is the fact that he's also a gracious gentleman, and I thank him for that. So with that, let me emote.
You know what, let me, since you had that liberty, that anyone else would like to take ten, fifteen seconds, not more than fifteen seconds? Okay, you had your chance. Randy, go ahead.
At this time, let me emote myself for a few minutes about the recycled water issue. The primary reason for having this on the agenda this evening is that we do have two very important action items before the council this evening, one on the consent calendar and one is a public hearing, but they're just a small part of what we're doing in the recycled arena and also in all of their, for that matter, water resources supply issues on behalf of the city of Lancaster and the region. These things have been made possible by the city council and your agreeing and direction to us to move forward in these many areas. As has been discussed many times in these chambers, water availability and reliability depend upon the region's ability to make beneficial use of all water supply, all water sources. And I have to tell you that right now, recycled water stands at the top of that list of water resources, not because it is most beneficially used, but because it is least beneficially used. And I think the decisions by the council in two thousand and four have led the way towards change so that we can make it a most beneficial use of water resources. As I mentioned later this evening, the council will consider two agenda items, which if you approve, will take us a few steps closer to that most beneficial use, at least for the recycled water supply system. The two items, the first one on the consent calendar is, we have before you this evening an agreement for the purchase of recycled water from the sanitation districts. They, of course, are the agency that treats the wastewater to that very high tertiary standard and then has the ability and the legal authority to sell it to qualified users or, in our case, retailers of that water. So this is an agreement this evening that has been in negotiation for many years with them, and I will address that again momentarily. The other item before you is public hearing number three, and because I'm going to say a few things about it now, I will say far fewer things about it when public hearing comes up, so you can look forward to a moment of near silence from me when that issue comes up on the agenda. That particular item is the recycled water rate schedule, and that, as I said, I will speak to in a few minutes, but it is setting the rates that the city of Lancaster, that we believe at the staff level are appropriate to encourage the use of recycled water while making it as affordable as we can, but also while recovering as much of the expense of operating a recycled water system as is possible. I mentioned back to the first item, the recycled water purchase agreement, that we've been negotiating that agreement for some time. I arrived almost five years ago, and it was at that time already under negotiation for some period of months and perhaps even years. I don't know exactly when it did start. The sanitation district, and part of the reason why it's taken so long is we've been trying to form a, or I should say, coalesce the community of water agencies and government agencies in the Antelope Valley, so that we all came to a similar understanding and agreement as to what it was we need from this system. The sanitation districts, of course, operate primarily in the LA Basin area, and things are different there than they are up here, as we all well know, but they nonetheless felt that the sales agreement that they have been using for many years down below should also be used here in the Antelope Valley, and that just didn't sit right with us, and so it's been a back and forth negotiation for some time. As I mentioned, we worked with the other public water interests in the Antelope Valley to determine our needs and also to get an agreement amongst ourselves as to what it was that we felt would be acceptable to all. Lancaster was given the lead to negotiate with the sanitation districts on behalf of all of those agencies, because we were the ones that had taken the first steps towards actually being able to sell water or provide water to recycled water users. Two and a half years later, we still are the only one that's close to being able to serve a customer. Again, I will mention something more about that momentarily. A little disturbing to me personally was the fact that after we had coalesced as a group, a couple of the Antelope Valley agencies decided that they should kind of, they still wanted to be a part of that group, but they wanted to go out and look after their own interests as well, and so that added some additional complexity to the negotiations that we were trying to move forward on behalf of the whole valley. We think we've got that pretty much back on track again, but I have to say that the very large water agency in the valley, the Waterworks Forty folks, fast-tracked their negotiations separate from the rest of us, and in the process, last month had an agreement, a per- And in the process, last month had an agreement, a purchase agreement approved by the sanitation districts that allows them, or commits the sanitation district, to providing to them thirteen thousand five hundred acre-feet a year of recycled water. That's without them having any customers. In our situation, though, we knew we were going to have, and still have today, six customers who are going to use just about five hundred acre-feet of that, of water a year. But we have strong potential and plans that there will be others added. So we wanted to increase what was a five hundred acre-foot a year allotment to nine hundred or a thousand acre-foot. But the sanitation districts would not agree to that, because we don't have customers for it yet. I don't understand how they can give thirteen thousand five hundred acre-feet a year to Waterworks in their agreement when they have no customers. But they only give us five hundred acre-feet a year, and we have customers lined up, ready to accept this water. We do continue to negotiate with them with the adoption of this consent calendar item this evening. It does move us the next step towards what will be, I'm sure, future opportunities to expand that entitlement. And I wouldn't be too surprised with that, we far surpass what Waterworks is able to deliver because of the customers that we are lining up. And I think that's a great thing for the city of Lancaster and for the region, for that matter. Presently, we're negotiating something new and different with the sanitation districts. And that is the system that has been constructed to date of pipelines and pump stations and so forth to move recycled water from the Lancaster Water Reclamation Plant to our Division Street Pipeline for direct reuse for municipal industrial purposes, and as well as to the east-side agricultural area that the sanitation district has been buying some, I think ultimately, five thousand acres where they can use that recycled water for irrigating crops, primarily alfalfa. They now have told us that in order for us to get the quality of water, the high quality of water that's coming out of that plant, we have to build another two and a half miles of pipeline from Division Street at Avenue E where we now connect at the turnout back to the plant so that we can take directly from the plant. And they have determined that that is least costly to them. I'm not so convinced myself. In fact, I believe that that approach will probably be more costly, because they have omitted the expense of building a second pump station that will also be necessary. Again, we're negotiating that, and I think that we'll come to some agreement with that ultimately. I certainly hope so. Again, our objective is to make sure that what is occurring is for the best interest of the whole community, the whole region, and not just for the city of Lancaster's recycled water program. This will be a boon of benefit to the sanitation districts, I think, as well. We will be ready by the, in May, to start delivering recycled water to the six customers who I mentioned earlier. We still have some documents that need to be signed, such as sales agreements or purchase agreements between the users and ourselves. That's necessary for regulatory purpose, to make sure that they are using it for the purposes intended, and nothing more. It's a kind of a formality, but nonetheless, it's one of those health and safety protective measures that the, the state and we feel are necessary to, to make that a good program. Unfortunately, the sanitation district still does not have their approvals by the LaHonton Regional Water Quality Control Board for them to provide recycled water to us. They still have some other things that need to be approved. And we're hopeful that they'll have that all completed up by May so that we can start delivering as soon as it's avail, as soon as our customers are ready. But we've been pretty much in the same holding pattern now for the last couple of years in that regard. Next month, we will be bringing to the city council for your consideration a couple of new items related to recycled water, one of which is the recycled water use regulations and the standard contract that will be required, as I mentioned, between city of Lancaster and the customers using that water. Moving on to public hearing number three. If that is adopted later on in your agenda this evening, it will set connection meter and commodity rates for recycled water purchased from Lancaster. As I said before, I will limit my further discussions at that time. If you have questions that come tomorrow, certainly at that time you can ask them, or now, for that matter. The connection and meter fees are set at a discount rate of ten percent below what the similar fees for connection to a potable water system in the valley would be. And the reason we've done that again is to encourage as many people as we can to connect to that system. There will be some upfront connection expenses for them, or some system modifications, changes that will need to be done. And the council has wisely set up a fund from which we can provide a loan to those new users that they would then repay over time from the money that they will save by buying water and paying water service fees at a lesser rate than they would if they were going to Waterworks, for example. Now, that's for the connection and the meter fees. We've also included in the rates this evening a fifteen percent discount for the commodity fees. That would be the per gallon charge, so for each gallon of water used by that system or that user. As I said several times already, our objective is to encourage new users by helping them to save on their water costs, and we think that ultimately that will allow the system to grow. There are three different sets of fees that are proposed to you this evening. One of these sets pertains to new water users, so someone who's not using water at all in the valley, who comes in, wants to develop the property, and sees the opportunity to use recycled water. They would have one set of fees. That would include, for example, the connection fees. But if they are already an existing user of a potable, of a potable water service, then they would not have a connection fee, and they would fit into the second category of reclaimed, recycled water users, and under that new fee structure. That fee structure has meter charges, and it has commodity rates, or per gallon rates. And then the last category of recycled water rates in our proposal to you this evening addresses those temporary users, such as contractors who need water for dust control or for soils compaction during construction. They would come, pay a fee for the, to get a meter, a construction meter, that they would then connect, and from which they would draw water and pay for the, the water that they would use in their process. It's important for me also to point out to you once again, as we have been doing since 2004, that although we will limit our operating and maintenance expenses for this system, we'll keep it at its absolute rock bottom while continuing to make it safe, it will be necessary for us to supplement the revenues that come in, simply because we only have six customers, and they're only using about five hundred acre-feet of water per year. Not until we reach several thousand acre-feet of water per year will we be able to start breaking even and then self-sustaining that system. So I want to alert the council that we will be looking into the, the future as having to provide some additional subsidy for some, some time. I've been talking a lot about problems and challenges and so forth. And while they have been at some times, what may have at first appeared to be a barrier to us, I think it has allowed us to come to a better program than what we might otherwise have had it been an easier road. Nevertheless, I think that we are on the right road. I think we're going to be able to have a good water recycle system and a retail program very soon. And as I said, hopefully, that's going to occur in May. Within the next two or three months, the council will be considering the next fiscal year's budget. And as part of that budget, we always, the last couple of years at least, have presented to you our proposal for a ten-year capital projects program. This year, we will be including in that ten-year look ahead. And of course, each year, or I should say, only money is appropriated for the upcoming fiscal year. And this time will be fiscal year '08-'09. But we nonetheless have tried to plan ahead and show you what we would do with future revenues for capital projects. Included will be several additional recycled water system expansion projects, projects that will allow us to get to other areas where there are large water users. And as the council well knows, for every gallon of recycled water used, it frees up a gallon of potable water from otherwise being needed. We'll go into details of those projects certainly when we present that CIP plan to you later in the next couple of months. I would like to just say that I appreciate the strong interest and the support and the direction that the city council has given us as we have progressed down this recycled water program. We feel that providing back to you periodic oral updates, such as I've just presented to you, will help to keep you informed of that progress, and in some cases, the problems and challenges that we're facing. And of course, we will continue to look to you for guidance to help us get through those difficult times. I do think, though, that altogether, what we're doing shows progress for the Antelope Valley and for the city of Lancaster. I think that providing these updates to you will keep in focus the large issue of water, balancing water supply and water demand, not just today, but well into the future. And I think that having that knowledge presented to you, or those facts presented to you periodically, will help you to continue to make what I think have been very wise decisions about starting a recycled water program. I'm going to end there, but I would like to offer the council, if you have questions, an opportunity for me to see if I can answer them.
Question, chairman? Comment?
I think he covers it pretty good.
I think he covered it very well.
Excellent.
I didn't use my full hour either.
Randy, we really appreciate that, Mr. Williams. It is very exciting to me to see a, an engineer who is passionate about what they do. I'm very pleased. Okay. All right, let's move then to agenda item to be removed, if any. No, sir. And public business from the floor on agenda item, do we have? Okay. And that then leads us, I believe, to the agency action for the consent calendar item number one.
Move it up to.
Second.
All right. Enamish and there's so order. And that takes us to the council consent calendar. And I want to make a comment, if you all allow me to do that, without pulling it. And that's CC-13. And I don't want to pull the item, I just want to talk about it a minute and then turn it back to you for any you want pulled or want to comment. Item thirteen, Captain Dealey talked about it a little bit. And that, the Walmart and those schools over in that area have already agreed to, to pay again for a full-time, forty-hour person who will be taking care of Walmart and that whole area right in there. And I think this is something that is to be commended to Walmart. Let's see, we have Walmart, we have Front Gate Plaza, LLC, State of Brothers Market. And we just want to say thank you to them. That's a good move, and it helps us to get where we want to get to. Any comment, gentlemen, on that one or any other?
You know, item thirteen is just a great, a great thing. We've done it for a year now, I think, and it's had just a great response. We have to thank Mr. Bozigny in here in making that happen, too. I know he was working, there were a handful of very concerned citizens on the east side that were working for about a year to try to make something like this happen. So, you know, the final results has really been effective.
It really is. Oh, yes, Mark, go ahead.
I would just like to say, and we don't usually give commercials, but citizens should go out of their way to shop at State of Brothers and Walmart and Front Gate Plaza, because they really do care about their customers.
We appreciate that. East Side is over there on my side of town. Appreciate that. Okay. Any other item that need to be pulled or talked about, or are we ready to take action on the consent calendar?
New adoption of the consent calendar.
Second.
Enamish, so order. Now then, that takes us to joint public hearing number one. And.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we'd ask that you open the hearings for the Housing Authority, joint public hearing number one, which is the City Council and Redevelopment Agency, and the public hearing number one, which is the City Council TEPRA hearing. And then you'll receive a single staff report applicable to all three of those.
All right, I declare eminence.
Open testimony on all three at the same time.
All right, we declare that those three are open. So who's gonna say something concerning JPH One and PH One? Oh, she's over there, she's ready. All right.
On November third, two thousand and six, the agency, the ladder of intent from Oasis International, dated for the acquisition of Briarwood, Mobile Home Estates and Desert Sands Mobile Estates. Oasis National, a nonprofit organization, is charged to preserve affordable housing, the ownership of manufactured home community. Their proposal will result in the payment of the bonds currently outstanding with each of the Mobile Home Parks and will eliminate these available collections at service. The proceeds of the bonds will belong to Oasis National Incorporated for the purpose of Briarwood, Mobile Home Estates and the Lancaster Housing Authority and Desert Sands, Oklahoma Estates from the Lancaster Redevelopment. This new debt will be paid solely from amounts received in terms of permission of loan agreement to be executed by the Lancaster Financing Authority and Oasis.
They have a public hearing.
In addition to the proceeds of the bonds, the agency will contribute not more than one million one hundred and fifty thousand from its low and modern investment bond for the purpose of paying a portion of the cost of issuance and the difference between the amount required to redeem the outstanding bonds with respect to each park and the proceeds of the bonds. In connection with the sale of Desert Sands Mobile Home Estates owned by the agency, the city council and agency will conduct a joint public hearing and adopt the attached resolutions concerning the sale as required pursuant to redevelopment law to allow all interested persons the opportunity to discuss the sale of the project. In connection with the sale of the Briarwood, Mobile Home Estates owned by the Lancaster Housing Authority, the Housing Authority will conduct a public hearing and adopt the attached resolution in accordance with the requirements of Health and Safety Code. In connection with the issue of bonds by the Lancaster Financing Authority to finance the acquisition by Oasis National of the Desert Sands Mobile Home and Briarwood, Mobile Home Estates, the city will conduct a TEPRA hearing to fulfill requirements of Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six amended. This public hearing is required to allow all parties the opportunity to discuss the financing. There is no financial impact for the city. The city will not be a party to the financing documents. The debt will not be secured by any form of taxation or by any obligation of the city. Neither will the debt represent a, or constitute a obligation of the city. Since these public hearings overlap for the sale and financing of Desert Sands and Briarwood, Mobile Home Estates, it is recommended that each of the public hearings be opened and conducted concurrently, and the agency and the city advise you on the sequence of the approvals and adoptions of the many resolutions.
I don't hear anybody over there. Done. Okay. Question, chairman, on these three? Mr. McCann, anything else?
Nothing at this time. I think it'd be appropriate to open up to public comment.
All right, do we have any public comment?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Our speaker is the official candidate, follow the vibration.
Mr. Mayor, council members. I had really.
I'd really like to thank, at this time, Mark Bozignian. I was approached this weekend on Saturday by some homeowners from the parks that had some concerns about the sale of this property and just generally didn't understand the staff report. I kind of harassed Mark, I think, all day Sunday and most of the day yesterday. And he got back to me in a way that allowed me to approach the homeowners and explain this deal to them. I'd like to thank the staff that helped this weekend and the people from Oasis National who put together the memo that they sent out. This is really a remarkable deal, I think, for the city and the homeowners involved. It guarantees that the residents of these parks 45 years, it's a covenant for 45 years, 55 years. Wow, that's even better than I thought. 55 years of guaranteeing that this will remain low-income housing over there. So this is really a great deal, I think, for the city to be able to pass this on and for the residents to be able to maintain their low-income status. So thank you, everyone, who worked with me this weekend to provide the answers that the homeowners needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, audience. I've been accustomed in the past, having been here for so long, Mr. Mayor, that an applicant or his representative would be present also to speak along with staff as to how the community really profits from such a venture. I think that would be most helpful. Is there such an applicant or representative here from that Oasis National, Inc.?
There are. They're here to answer questions, if there are any questions. Todd Smith of ML Stern and Oasis National and Marshall Lynn.
And speak afterwards, Mr. Mayor, if that be the case. So we can all have facts and figures that are relevant to this issue?
Mr. Mayor, I think it's time for public comment right now.
Yeah, time for a public comment.
If there are questions, then those individuals...
If you have questions, we're going to ask those.
So used to alcohol hearings, Mr. Mayor, excuse me. My name is Ray Chivera, I live at Sherwood Mobile Home Park. A recent blogger referred to me, and he's a prominent person in this community because he's the older brother of a major candidate running for mayor in the city. A reliable source tells me they refer to me as the leader of the Coalition of Trailer Trash. And I respectfully suggest that there are members of that trailer trash city in the audience here tonight. Most of them are senior citizens, but I'm happy we got this far. I would have hoped that appropriate noticing of this item and related items over the past year or so, that staff says this has been going on to get to this stage, would have occurred so that those more deeply concerned in those basic parks that you own for quite a while would have had some rudimentary knowledge of what's being done in their behalf instead of being treated like children. Mr. Mayor, you remember back in the early 90s when I invited you as a representative of an association of Lancaster Estates, which at that time was going down the tubes, to come speak to us about our problems, what the city could do for us, you were duly elected, and about possibly purchasing Lancaster Estates? It's a great park now, but it wasn't then. It prompted us to leave, go to Rancho Vista. So, proper noticing. Give the troops information. That's one reason some of these people are here tonight. We would hope that future board meetings of this organization would be held in a location that's accessible to at least their representatives so they could present appropriate matters of import to them directly instead of having to consider going somewhere else, Orange County, San Diego, wherever corporate headquarters may be. At least allow the representatives to present issues directly. Some Mobile Home Park owners do that already in the city, even if they are absentee owners. Finally, I would hope that Oasis National would complete its initial registration with the State Attorney General's Office so that a full list of board members be legally available to those of us upon request. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Our last speaker is Chuck, and our caller is...
Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm the one that drafted the aforementioned letter of intent by Mrs. Brubaker, and I feel that I need to make the council and you aware of a fact that we had an agreement in place to pay me a commission, and they have since reneged on that. I've made several attempts to rectify this situation to no avail. Mr. Bush, Mr. LaSalle, who are obviously no longer with the city, I'm the one that authored the letter of intent, which is even referred to in the staff report in that. I was told by Mr. McKeown that because I don't have anything in writing, that I have no claim, and that, you know, if I have to litigate this issue tough. My issue with that is, I would have had something in writing had they allowed me to finish the process and be put before the City Council. That's why I don't have anything in writing. They told me they couldn't. I have confirmation letters, I have files three feet thick to show my involvement in this, and I just wanted to let you know. I've also contacted the State Attorney General's Office, and I was referred to the LA County grand jury to file a claim. Mr. Mayor, I don't want to do any of that. I'm just a working guy, and I need to go back to work and not deal with this issue. But I worked on this for months and then was told in a meeting at Urban Futures, "Tough luck, Charlie," basically, and that they had spoken behind my back or had conversations that I was not a part of, I believe was the exact words. And I'm just trying to get some restitution here, if at all possible, or have somebody hear me and do something about this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, a couple things. Let me respond to Mr. Hatoot first, and then I have some comments on what Mr. Chivera said. So, first of all, the normal process in a real estate broker listing is to get a listing agreement signed by the client. In this case, there is no such agreement. He purported to represent to the nonprofit that he was representing the city or the redevelopment agency, and then he purported to represent to the redevelopment agency that he was representing the nonprofit. In either event, there is no contract between either party. There was a letter of intent signed by the nonprofit and signed by Mr. Hatoot, which he correctly states he did prepare, and I assume that's correct. I don't know who prepared it, but his signature's on it. That was presented to the agency, and it had a provision in there that said that there would be a commission paid. But it also says that this is not an offer to purchase, it is subject to a future agreement. There was no provision in there for the amount of the commission. In no writing have I ever seen a reference to an amount of the commission other than his letters claiming some $339,000. To be entitled to this, you need to have a contract. There is no such contract here. And we've communicated with his office a number of times. The last communication was in June of last year, and prior to that, Ms. Brubaker and her staff communicated with him both by email and by letter, rejecting every contention that was ever made that we had agreed to a commission. Clearly, the staff does not have the ability to agree to pay a commission. That is only for the agency board and/or the city council to decide. That was never decided here. And so, in my opinion, there is no enforceable contract. There is no basis even to determine from anything that was submitted in writing other than his claim to some commission to what the amount was that anybody ever agreed to because there was never an agreement. So with that, I'd say that that issue is just dead. It's a nonstarter. There is no basis for a commission, and none should be paid. Now, with respect to the noticing provisions, Mr. Smith with Oasis has met, and I guess other people on behalf of the staff have met with a number of the park tenants over the past year. There was a major effort to obtain various certifications from those Mobile Home Park tenants that were a necessary precondition to our moving forward with the financing. And so, to suggest that nothing was told to those people, I think, is just incorrect. And maybe Mr. Smith could respond to that. Todd, do you have anything to add to that? Okay, I misspoke. Then it was both the property manager, Newport Pacific, that actually met with them and obtained all of those certifications from them. So they clearly knew what was going on.
Okay. Questions, gentlemen? I don't have any. So if, for if you're concerned, this item that was brought up is dead and we don't need to do anything or say anything about that?
There's no action to be taken on that.
Okay.
And it would be, at this point, it would be appropriate to take the action on the Housing Authority action?
HAPH 1?
Yes.
All right. Young man?
Second.
All right, would you cast your vote, please? Unanimous, and also at this time, I think I can go ahead and close the Housing Authority agenda. If there are no objections, that is closed. And that takes us then to... APH 1. And that has already been discussed?
Right, the hearings have been conducted, so actually what you need to do is close all the public hearings.
All right. Just close it, huh? All right, do we have any opposition? If not, it's closed. All right. And the same with PH 1. There's no objection. We will close it. Closed. All right. And we will go ahead and open PH 2.
No, no, you still have actions to be taken.
Ah, okay.
Move adoption, move adoption of the resolution number 01...
Okay, and then we'll just close it.
0822.
You're right. Okay, unclose it. Unclose it.
Second.
Good. All right. Time for you to cast your vote unless there are comments.
Can we do all of this at one time? JPH 1, including Resolution 820 and 0108?
Separate actions, one's the City Council and one's the Redevelopment Agency.
Move adoption on JPH 1.
No, the one I adopted was PH 1. Let's go back then.
I believe the motion...
You can make them in any order.
Yeah, I believe the motion was to adopt, because I seconded it, Resolution Number 08-20.
Okay. Did we get a second on it?
That was my second.
Okay.
Is that correct?
It is now.
Okay.
Let's vote. Unanimous and so ordered. Rather, PH 1?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt Resolution Number 0108 and also approve the appropriations of $1.15 million from the Lancaster Redevelopment Agency.
Okay, if you want to go all to that detail, that's fine. Okay, that is unanimous and so ordered. Now we can go to PH 2.
Okay, I already motioned, and somebody already seconded.
PH 1.
Oh, wait a minute.
PH, you need to adopt Resolution 08-22.
I'll move that we adopt Resolution Number 08-22.
Second. Okay, now, all right, we'll catch up together here. All right, that's unanimous and is so ordered. How about 2 now? Can I go there?
Go for it.
Declare it open.
Next one on the list.
All right. And do we have any report from anybody on this one?
Mr. Mayor, that is mine.
Just a second. Okay. Mr. Jeffrey has an emergency and he's going to have to leave, so I'll let the record show that he is leaving at this point. Okay, Mr. Lurkey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The request that is before you is a proposed resolution to adopt an increase in the capital fire protection fees that are associated with the Consolidated Fire Protection District that Lancaster is a part of. Back in 1992, the council originally adopted an ordinance which established this development fee. Periodically, this is reviewed by Los Angeles County in conjunction with the preparation of their capital improvement program for fire station facilities and is adjusted as necessary. In November of 2007, the County Board of Supervisors did approve an adjustment to this fee, increasing it from a current rate of $0.71 per square foot of new construction to a proposed fee of $0.85 per square foot of new construction. What we have before you is a resolution that would essentially allow the city to collect this fee. The procedure that happens is it is collected in conjunction with the building permit issuance, and that is passed on to the Consolidated Fire Protection District for the financing of their facilities. I'd be happy to answer any questions for you. One note, I did make contact with the local BIA representative. She did not indicate that there were any concerns on the part of the building industry members in regards to this.
Questions, gentlemen? Any question? Okay, do we have any speakers? No speakers on number two, so we'll close the public hearing, and we'll have any discussion or a motion.
I'll move to adopt Resolution Number 0821.
Okay, is unanimous and so ordered. That will take us to public hearing number three, and we will declare that public hearing open.
Mayor Hearns and council members, this is the item that I mentioned to you during my earlier oral presentation. And as I said, I'll be very brief on this one. This one provides to you a resolution that would establish the recycled water rate schedule for users of the cities of Lancaster's recycled water system once water is available, provided to us, to be delivered to customers. I think I described that system before. A couple of things I did not tell you before, though, that may be important to share now is that the 15% discount for the commodity rate and the 10% discount for the connection fees and the meter fees are tied to the rates established by Waterworks 40, since they are the primary water purveyor in the area. Nevertheless, when rates are adjusted, those rates will be brought back to the council for your consideration. I just wanted to make sure you understood that. It's not something that raises automatically forevermore. The other thing was some good news, and I think the council is aware that at least until the final full-scale tertiary treatment plant that is presently just beginning construction by the sanitation districts, until it is completed, the smaller system that they now have in place will produce a quantity of water, and that water will be provided to us, the City of Lancaster, at no cost, which will help to, again, lower the amount of subsidy necessary to keep that system viable. So again, if there are questions at this time, please allow me to address them for you.
Any question?
Randy, the current system that's producing water is, how many acre-feet a year will that give us?
It, let's see, one, there's two systems, and we would be tied to only one of those systems, and that's the 1 million gallon a day plant. 1 million gallons a day produces about 1,100 acre-feet a year.
Thank you.
Any other question? Do we have any speaker cards? No speaker card, we'll close the public hearing unless there are objections. Okay, discussion and decision by the council.
Move to adopt Resolution Number 082-23.
Okay, that is unanimous and so ordered, and that takes us then to public business from the floor on non-agenda items. No, did I skip something on it?
I don't have any announcements, sir.
Okay. Then I'm good. Okay. I'm trying to get to the end in a hurry here. We're ready for non-agenda items, yes.
He may have been out there with his rights, but there's been word come down to me that he's going to try to stop the signatures that I collected from being presented to the, to the, I forgot who it is up here at City Hall, who gets the signatures from the petitions, but, you know, I just wanted to make it known that if this is tried, I will pursue legal action against you for trying to scold my right of freedom of speech and for my right to freedom of petition, and also the city of Lancaster will be involved in that also, because you're an agent of the city. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, sir. Any other speaker card?
David Hall.
Is that?
I believe he's got a little something there.
Science wall. Mr. Mayor and council members, to get in the festive mood to talk about water, I dressed up a little bit. This reminds me of the last guy that nobody listened to about water, and that didn't work out very well. I got a letter here from the governor, who's talking about, it's a press release of all the upcoming water functions, and there's so many ways to get educated about water, and what we're going to have, there's never been a greater body of people assembled who know a lot about water that have no water. This is our thing this week from the pumping station where they've turned over the pumps and they're redoing them. They want us to turn off our sprinklers. Mr. Williams, you've talked about the most beneficial use of water. The most beneficial use is to ask people immediately to stop wasting the water, watering their lawns and the sprinklers. This is a real simple thing to do. Fifty percent of that water is wasted, and while we sit by idly, this is what the governor says, "The longer we wait, the worse and more complicated the problem will get." How come we can't do what they ask us to do at this station? Doesn't hurt the lawns. Let's just go for a fifty percent decrease in water use that goes on the lawns and in the cars, washing the cars. And that's what I'm going to ask you to do tonight. We're in trouble, and our water's going to run out, and I want somebody to do something about it now, not when the next meeting rolls around. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. I'm sorry. That's the end of the speaker. All right. I think that then takes us to the council agenda comments, council comments.
None tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Larry, to speak on water.
There was no question.
Okay. I know it's not on here, Mr. City Manager and Legal Counsel, Assistant City Manager and any of your staff. That's not on here for me to ask, but that's my way of doing it. Is there anything else?
Me, sir?
Any other to staff over here? Nobody. Okay. So, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, we thank you. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, March eleventh, two thousand and eight, in this room. I thank all of you for coming and be with us tonight. Thank you so much.[1538.13]